I think we have everybody and I got four thirty if you want.
All right.
If everybody's ready.
Yep, I'm ready. Staff, will you call the roll for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Buchanan.
Here.
Johns. French.
Here.
And Gertson.
Here.
Want to welcome everyone here. This is, this is a first, first try for us as, as a board. It's, in, in a year of weird and, and new and change and trying new things, this is, I hope those that are, that are attending our meeting today, both viewing by distance and our, our cases that it will be heard are, will have a little bit of patience with us as we move through this new way of doing business. We're used to having everybody's boots underneath the same table, so this is, this is, this is a, this is a virtual table for us. I would hope that everyone got their packets this week and I would, then they reviewed all, all, all the contents. I would entertain a motion for, or open for discussion and approval of the minutes from the November nineteen meeting.
I move for approval of the minutes of the zoning committee and has submitted.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the November nineteen, twenty, twenty minutes for the Board of Zoning Appeals, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Minutes are approved.
This is Ken Johns. Am I being heard?
Yes, you are, Ken.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
To, to protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to establish an orderly fact-finding procedure, Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals follows a specific fact-finding procedure which is contained in the handouts. I know that they, they are not in your chairs, but if you'd be in the public works ability, they have those handouts to review. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by the Board of Zoning Appeals are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within thirty days of the decision. We'd like to formally open the, the hearing regarding case number twenty twenty dash fifteen. A request by Dale and Lori Schaefer for a special exemption from the Reno County zoning regulations to construct a one hundred and ten foot by one hundred and ten foot by sixteen foot tall accessory building and permit a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet of accessory buildings. The total square footage of all accessory structures exceeds the two thousand square feet maximum permitted on land zone R one Rural Residential District. The property is located at two four one six North Bueller Road. Do any of the board members have a conflict of interest with this case?
No.
No.
Has anyone had outside contact with the applicant?
No.
Would the applicant or agent please step towards the microphone and, and please state your name and address for the record and you have ten minutes to present your case.
Can you guys hear?
Yes, again.
Okay. The reason for the building is I need more room over here at my property. I have some muscle cars, some antique tractors. I like to work on vehicles for myself and just to be able to store them inside and keep them out of the weather. The, the building I am building is eighty by ninety with the sixteen foot sidewall, so it fits within this permit. So I made my permit plenty big to be able to accommodate space in the building and I'll put in another driveway. Just want to be able to use it for personal use and plenty for storage or working on automobiles or some tractors and stuff. I don't know what, what other information I really need to provide. You guys want to ask me questions or I'm kind of unfamiliar with this stuff. So anything you need to know, I can try my best to answer your questions.
Board, do you have any questions for, for the applicant?
What, what do you plan, the schedule of building this?
The builder is supposed to start first part of February. We were set kind of for January, but there's been some delays just due to the weather and then I think their employees, you know, they've been a little limited with availability for employees. They've been kind of like staff. But as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Building of this size, this, we, it just raises a question for me to make sure and I also, I guess I wanted to raise the, the direction that we're concerned about possible or potential commercial use in this building. Do you have the intent of running a business out of it or anything like that? I mean, I just kind of curious.
No, no, I don't. It's just for personal use. This intersection is a fifty by eighty and then there's a twenty foot lean-to on each side, one being closed in and one is open to the side just for storage purposes. But the work, actual work area is fifty by eighty in this intersection.
Gotcha.
So that makes it not seem as big because overall it seems kind of big.
Right. Yeah, the, the foot, the footprint is, is what, what I was looking at.
Yes.
Any other questions? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mark Von Ash, the county planner. One question for the applicant. Mr. Schaefer, you said it's, if I believe it's an eighty foot by ninety foot by sixteen now? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so good evening, board. The applicant in his application has requested a hundred and ten foot by a hundred and ten foot by sixteen foot now. You hear testimony here this evening that says it's going to be an eighty foot by ninety foot. You as a board would have the opportunity to modify that down to eighty foot by ninety foot or you can certainly approve the application for a hundred and ten foot by a hundred and ten foot. Couldn't go larger than that, but you can certainly go smaller than that. So that's up to the board to decide on what direction that you would want to go with this. You can certainly give him what he requested in the application or you can modify it down to the eighty foot by ninety foot only that he provided testimony on. But as you read in my report, you know, I did have a few concerns, you know, with the size of the building and I just wanted to make sure that the applicant and, and everybody, you know, is aware of that, you know, a commercial use, you know, would take a conditional use permit. You heard Mr. Schaefer, you know, explain that, you know, this is just for his antique cars and for tractors and, and other residential uses. And so just want to make sure for the record that, you know, if you want to store like, you know, a semi truck on there, you can certainly do that. But if you're running any type of trucking operation, then that would take a, a conditional use permit through, through the planning commission here. As you can see in the site plan that I provided the board, you know, the building is going to be located kind of on the northern part of, of the property here. It's going to be next to a, a small residential property of, of less than three acres. However, I would say that, you know, the, the building is located well in back of that existing house and, and dwelling here. There are no other home sites, you know, in the immediate area. I would point out to the board that the parcel to the west and to the southwest and the south, those are large farm parcels, if you will, of over three hundred acres here. Mr. Schaefer owns thirty, thirty-six acres approximately and then there's some other fairly larger parcels, you know, probably in the ten to twenty range that are two, two is north, but there is that one house that only has about two, two and a half acres there. It's right to the north of him. I would point out also to the board that I, I did not receive any verbal or any written comments from anybody in the public that was sent a notice. And so with that, I looked at this and staff has recommended approval of this, of this request based on the three conditions that you typically have in boards of zoning appeal cases. I would point out again, you know, that you have the opportunity, if you want to modify that down to the eighty foot by ninety foot that he is requesting, or you could give him a latitude to, to, you know, have something in between what he requested tonight and the hundred and ten by hundred and ten that he requested. So again, I would just point out that, you know, the fact that we got to make sure that, you know, there's no commercial or industrial activities without an approved conditional use permit. So with that, I would conclude my presentation and stand for any questions for the board.
The proposed site, is there any floodplain rules or regs that we need to look at?
There's no floodplain on, on this property. This area is in a zone X, which is outside of the point two percent or what's commonly referred to as the five hundred year floodplain. So yeah, there's no, no issues with floodplain in this area.
Gotcha. Just looked low there. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything.
Right, yeah. I believe, Mr. Johns has something?
Was there, am I correct, there's no plumbing or no water service supplied, water supply to this or no, no sewer usage whatsoever?
That is correct.
You're not going to wash, not going to wash the muscle car?
Well, I don't know. I don't have any plans of having to, you know, or do that.
I suppose it could be added. It's more probably easier to put the plumbing in.
I suppose it could.
I'm sorry?
I suppose it could be added if necessary, but not planning on that at this point, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There'll be, oh, there'll be a, other utilities, electricity line going out there?
Yes, yes, I will have power to it.
Yes. Will that be underground or overhead or do you know yet?
I don't know yet. I assume overhead.
No way that that will cause any problems with any access or?
No. It is pretty close to the power line, that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I have a couple of questions that has to do with the construction of the building. The fifty by eighty with lean-tos on each side, what, what is the general construction there? And if you was to add on it to it at a later date, what would that construction be?
I really don't know. I, I assume this is big enough that I won't have to add on is my plans.
So is it all steel or is all wood covered with steel or what?
It's a wood post-mar construction, you know, covered with metal. The Yoder engineered guys are the ones that are building it. So it's a, it's a wood structure with a tin over it.
With a concrete pad?
Yes.
And the concrete pad goes all under the whole building or just the four fifty by eighty?
In the, in the fifty by eighty area and then the one closed in part, the twenty by eighty. That will all have concrete floor and the other side, the twenty foot that's open will be a dirt floor, sand floor.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any other, any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, the public hearing for this case is now closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to add for the record that there's nobody here at our offices wishing to provide any comment on, on this case.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me to ask.
Yes.
It's a little bit harder, a little bit harder when we're not there to
Right.
to see who's in the hall. Okay, I'll consider this public hearing now, now closed. Board, do we have any other, any, any discussion with this matter? Seeing no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move case number twenty twenty dash fifteen, request by Dale and Lori Schaefer requesting special exception from Reno County zoning regulations to permit the total square footage of all accessory buildings on the parcel to exceed the two thousand square foot limit in R one Rural Residential District, two four one six North Bueller Road be approved, allowing a building one ten by one ten by sixteen or twelve thousand one hundred square feet in size at the location shown with the application, subject to the conditions listed above, based upon the reasons stated in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Staff, call the roll.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Approved.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Johns.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Gertson.
Yes. Case proved. We have another case before us on the, before the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's case number twenty twenty dash sixteen. A request by, I'm going to miss, I'm going to mispronounce this. I'm assuming Michael.
Mikel Bowringer.
M- Mikel, thank you very much. Bowringer and Chelsea Miller for a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to construct a forty by forty by ten foot accessory building and permit a total of three thousand one hundred and eighty-four square feet of accessory buildings. The total square footage of all accessory structures exceeds the two thousand square feet maximum permitted on land zone R one Rural Residential District. The property is located at five thousand, excuse me, five zero one zero East Avenue G. Will the applicant please step forward, state your name and address?
Sir, Chairman, is there, is there any outside contacts or?
There you go. Sorry, got ahead. Is there any, any outside contacts with, with, with the, from the, with the board, with applicant?
No.
Any conflict, any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Okay. Would, would the applicant please state, state their name and, and address for the record and you have ten minutes to present your case?
I'm Kelsey Miller at five zero one zero East Avenue G in Hatch and we are just wanting this forty by forty building to store our toys, vehicles for our kids. We have a daughter that'll be fourteen this summer, so we'll have another vehicle. We have two county vehicles at our property every day, seems like. So that's what it'll be used for. We'll have power just for broad door openers and lights and that's pretty much it. Nothing fancy.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant from the board?
What, what is the flooring in this structure?
It'll be concrete floor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
I will ask again about water and plumbing or any wastewater projected or prepared for this?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, staff?
Hey, board, as you heard, this is a request for a forty by forty by ten accessory structure. There are several other structures on the property, so the total square footage exceeds the two thousand square foot requirement. And so that's why we are here tonight. If you see with the, the site plan and also the zoning map that I provided, that the building is going to be located in the north corner of the property, so it should be well away from any other accessory structures. As I indicated in my staff report, the, the nearest other house is about probably what thirteen hundred feet away from their property, the surrounding property around their house is agricultural land, even though it's owned residential. All the property to the south is actually agricultural land as well. There's no structures there nearby, so there really should not be any, any kind of, of issues with the neighbors here. Again, did not receive any verbal or written comments regarding this application here, so staff has recommended approval of, of the request to construct the forty by forty structure on the property based on the three conditions that you see listed in your staff report, which are standard conditions. So with that, I would stand for any questions again.
Board, do you have any questions for staff? Does the applicant have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I will, or is there anybody in, is there anybody from the public to make comment on this case?
Catch, Mr. Chairman. No, there's nobody in the office that would like to comment on this case.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no further comment or rebuttal statements.
If not, then this, the public hearing is now closed. Board, do you, is there any discussion that, that comes to mind? If there is no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
This is the move that Kate number twenty day sixteen. Kelsey Miller. Square footage, accessory structures on the first feet, or feet, limit R one Rural Residential District, five zero one zero East Avenue G be approved, building forty by forty by ten or sixteen where feet at the location shown with the application and subject to the conditions above, based upon the reasons stated in the staff report and at the public hearing.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, staff, call the roll.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Approved.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Johns.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Gertson.
Yes. Case is approved. Thank you to the applicants that came, that joined us via this distance, via the, the virtual meeting for the BZA. Appreciate their patience with us. Staff, do you have any other business for this board?
I have no other business for the, the BZA, Mr. Chairman.
Board, do you have any, any other business for us to, to attend to? Seeing none, all adjourn the, the BZA.
On a motion?
Yep, please.
So move.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned. Okay, I'll now convene the, the, the planning commission portion of our meeting. Staff, will you call the roll?
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Buchanan.
Here.
Johns.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Gertson.
Here. Thank you all. And if there's any new people, new folks that have joined us, thank you for joining us on our virtual meeting. To protect the rights of all parties involved and to give an opportunity for everyone to.
Yes, can we do the, the minutes first?
Oh, sorry, I got, I was ready to get rolling. Sorry. I'm excited, I'm excited for the cases to come. How does that sound?
I, that's all right.
Let's, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the minutes from the November nineteen meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes of the planning commission has submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Minutes approved. To protect the rights of all parties involved and to give an opportunity, what, sorry?
We're going to do the old business first.
Oh, okay.
We're going to do the, the regulations under old business.
I'll entertain a motion. Yep, I'll entertain a motion to pull to open the old business of the, the case twenty twenty dash oh nine.
Was that, have we tabled it?
It was tabled, so we need to pull it off the table.
I think that was a motion. I'll second that.
Okay. Been, been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Okay, case twenty twenty oh nine, the WEX regulations are off the table for discussion. All of you have had a chance to review the, there's, there's actually two copies that have been given, that have, that were shared with you. The, one copy is what I call the red liner as drafted, standing in the upper right-hand corner. That shows the changes that we discussed at our last meeting. And the, I, I call it the clean copy is if we, if we so approve of the changes, that's, that will be the copy that will move forward. I'll just highlight the two, two changes that we made. Actually, there's, there's really only two major ones and one was the definition of, of the turbine in the document and the consistency of the naming of it throughout the document. That was, that was a large piece of that. And the other was the addition of the setbacks that we, that we voted on that had the verbiage of, we had, the previous copy did not have a defined setback amount and we, we all determined that we wanted the two thousand feet or four times the height added in as, as verbiage. Those were the, those were the main changes. Are there any, is there any discussion on that document?
I just want to thank Mark for all the work that he's put in getting this all in shape and getting it consistent throughout and following our sometimes back and forth decisions on it. I think it looks good and I'm happy with what we've got right now.
I may, Mr. Chairman, I may suggest one, one modification, you know, to the board's and for your consideration. When, when the board asked us to write a, a definition of, of a turbine, you know, we kept it pretty simple. After we wrote it and after we sent the packet out, we, staff here, we kind of looked at this a little bit more and, and we'd like to maybe suggest to the board's consideration a slight modification to what was written in the document that states standard twelve seventeen twenty. So what's written, we would like to maybe suggest to the board, a turbine means the total structural components used to convert the wind's kinetic energy into electrical energies. We would just clarify it a little bit more. This says the total structural components. This way, we, we hope that it's a little bit clearer that we mean a turbine means everything. It means the, the main structure that holds the cell, it means the, the blades, it means all of the components. We kind of felt that. We kind of felt that just saying the structure, that could maybe open it up for discussion of, well, what does the structure mean? So we would hope that this would maybe clarify that a little bit more to everybody.
Do we want to take that further even and maybe state that that would include power, nasal, and blades, any other accessory structure?
May I maybe say that again, Steve, I didn't quite catch on. Maybe Ken, if you could mute your, if you're not gonna speak, you know, that would help a little bit. I'm not sure, we're getting some feedback.
Okay, I was, what, what I was saying was, do we want to extend that definition to maybe state that it includes the tower, the nasal, the blades, and any accessory structure?
I can certainly do that, we can certainly name the components if you want. What do you mean by accessory structure?
That's just a catch-all, if there's anything else that would be a part of it that we're, we're not aware of.
I think the risk we have in starting to name the components, I get that you have the catch-all in there, Steve. I think if we, the risk we have with naming the components that we're gonna miss something. So I, I think just the word components is pretty inclusive in my mind.
I think the staff recommendation is, is good. I was a little bothered by, by not having a little more definition to that. But I, I mean, when you say the total structural components, then seems to me that covers everything.
Any other comments on that addition? Staff, do you require us to vote on that addition, or can we, do, does that, is that just included in the, in the total, total document as, as, if we, if we choose to approve it?
I would say go ahead and vote on it, that way we know that the majority of the board accepts that, that change.
Okay.
Just to make it clear for the record.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion on that, on, on the, it's, if, for reference where we were working. We're working with, in the paragraph 23-103 definitions, we're working on, on paragraph number five. Just for clarity, I'll read it. A turbine means the structure and components used to convert the wind's kinetic energy into electrical energy. It's on page 23-2 of the document, just for clarity.
And that.
All entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I think that what I heard Mark say was total structural components, was that right?
Yes. Yes, that's right, yeah. Russ, you read what it says right now, so I'll, I will read what, changes.
Please do.
So it'll say a turbine means the total structural components used to convert the wind's kinetic energy.
Gotcha.
So really, we're just adding the words total structural components.
Good with that.
So a wind, excuse me, a turbine means the total structural components used to convert the wind's kinetic energy into electrical energy.
Okay.
I would, I would move that we accept that change within the draft.
Second.
Moved and seconded, staff, please call the roll.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Johns.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Gertson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion about the, throughout this document? We've, we've gone through paragraph by paragraph in previous, previous meetings. But I, I believe that we've, we've, we've come to a point where if, if everyone has reviewed it, we are, we can discuss individual items as you see fit.
Okay, I do have one thing I'd want to, to cause to surface. I'm not objecting to anything that, and that's under 10711. Where it's, where the subject matter is ice throw, and there is a, a category A. But once there's a category A, if you read the rest of the document, that kind of implies there must be a B. And there is no B. So I'm wondering, why do we have the A there? Why isn't it just white ice throw and then the paragraph?
We, we did that just to keep it consistent with the, the other numbers above, like lighting, operation requirements and such. You know, it starts out with the number and then it does a letter, but I, I see your point, Mr. Macklin, that, yeah, typically, I think if you have an A, it's implied that there's a B. And in this case, there is no B, it's just one, one paragraph there. So we did, just for consistency purposes is, is all we did really. We weren't trying to imply that there's gonna be a letter B.
I have a question on eight, the, under lighting, item B. It says, any, any other lighting requirements on the turbine shall comply with but not exceed the minimum FAA requirements. That seems a little odd to me to say that. Does that mean, explain what that means.
I think we were just trying to make sure that, that the turbines would meet the minimum FAA requirements. We weren't going to require them to do any additional lighting other than what the minimum is under the FAA requirements. We don't want them to add additional lighting to, to a wind turbine. We just want them to meet whatever the minimum requirement is under the FAA.
For, for instance, we wouldn't want them putting lights all the way up and down the tower or something else that flashed. So we want to make sure it's the minimum amount of lighting that's, that's needed. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, so you know, like if, if they are required to have the red light on top of, of the turbine there, we don't want them to add additional white lights on there that aren't necessary or aren't required by the FAA. We just want whatever the minimum requirement is that the FAA does and nothing, nothing more than that.
Okay, I, I, I was reading that differently, so I'm, I appreciate the explanation.
Okay, good, it's fine, good question.
Good question, that's right. Any other discussion about this document?
First, I'd like to, this is Steve, and I'd like to go ahead and, and bring back my plug for greater setbacks on non-participating property lines. I, you know, still feel that, you know, the setback we show in the proposed regs of the heights of the tower plus 50 feet is inadequate to provide the non-participating property owners, you know, the adequate protection for their, their land.
Guess I need clarification. We've got it, we have 2,000 feet or, or four times the height of the turbine.
No, Mark, I'm talking, I'm talking about the, the, the one on item 2B. The 231072B.
Okay.
Okay, where basically is the turbine height plus 50 feet for setback from roadways or other property, property lines, non, and non-principle buildings. So this would basically be the non-participating properties, property line, not the principal building on that property. I'm saying I would like to see a greater setback from those property lines.
Thoughts from other board members?
You know, right now you're at 550 feet on a 500-foot tower. You know, I would like to go at least, I would prefer to go like 1,500 feet, but I would settle for like 1,000 or 1,200 feet from the property line and road right of ways. You start looking at, you know, ice throw, blade throw, things along that line, that debris field is much greater than the 550 feet.
I'm satisfied the, the way it is right now.
I think that I am too. I haven't seen anything particular that I felt that would, that made me uncomfortable with that particular setback.
I've been promoting larger setbacks all the time. I guess I, I, it would be fine if they to be a little, little larger than that. It could still be fairly close to an adjacent property.
I'm comfortable with what we have.
I didn't hear you, Bruce, speak, speak again, please.
I'm comfortable with what we have in the document.
Any other discussion on, on the concern that Steve brought up?
Steve, where would you put a, an alteration here? You put it in item B?
Yes, I wondered about item B, that setback would be whatever we could side on, but I feel it should be 550 feet, you know, anything I'm happy with, anything greater than that would appear to be a minimum.
It's impossible to control the future, but there's, the possibility exists that someone may want to, some non-participating property owner may want to build at some, at some point. And he may end up being closer than the, the 1,000 foot merely because he's across the road.
Exactly, I mean, it, to me, it, it, you know, could harm future development. Also could, you know, harm the current use of that land. Whatever they may be using it for.
What would be your thoughts, 1,000 feet from the property line or the accessory building?
I would be happy with 1,000 feet, or we could do something similar to the other way, 1,000 feet or two times our tower height, whichever is greater.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to alter item 2B on page 23.5. The wording should be, the wording proposed is that no turbine shall be located closer than 1,000 feet from an accessory building, a property line, or a road right-of-way line.
Okay, been moved and seconded, that we amend 2B. Is there any discussion?
I want to make sure I'm exactly on the right place. So, Kim, would you tell me what page you're on that you're modifying?
Page 23-5.
Okay.
About halfway down the page, you see number two that says setbacks. And below that, there's items A, B, and C, and D, and E. I'm, I'm, I'm amending item 2B.
Oh, 2B, okay.
Yes, item 2B on page 23-5.
You want to, you want to read, read what your proposal is again? I'm making notes here, and I was scribbling and you broke up just a little bit.
I seem to be the cause of some feedback here, and so most of the time my mic is muted. But once in a while, I forget to turn it on, and I think it still causes some feedback. Item 2B, the proposed amendment would be, no turbine shall be located closer than 1,000 feet from an accessory building, property line, or road right-of-way line. I would be eliminating the total height of the turbine plus 50 feet.
Okay, fair enough. Nope, I, I just wanted to clarify what I had written down. Was moved and seconded. Staff, you want to call the roll?
Well, I'd like to, discussion, we went from 50 feet to 1,000 feet, and I guess I want to, I want that to be discussed a little bit more.
I, I think it was from five, like 550 feet to 1,000 feet. But I still feel like we're pretty comfortable with where we're at, and I, I'm hesitant to change that setback at this point.
Yeah, and I am too.
And that's a matter of preference, I guess. I'm not comfortable with the original setback.
Hey, is everyone comfortable with the motion? How it was stated? Any more discussion? Staff, call the roll.
Steve, did you second that motion, I assume?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I thought, I didn't catch that the first time. Alright, so call the roll on that motion. So Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
No.
Buchanan.
No.
Johns.
Yes.
French.
No.
Gertson.
No.
Motion failed 4 to 2.
So the document reads as printed.
Is our next activity then to move to present the document in its entirety to the county commission?
If this board so chooses, that would be the next step.
You choose to do that with the modification in, in the definition, you can choose to table it for further information, or you can choose to, you know, recommend denial. It's, it's the board's decision.
I'm going to bring up my original subject here about item 11 under 107, where the A is in there. And, Mark, I understand why you put the A in there, but if you back up to, excuse me a minute, I'll get you back there in a minute. I thought I had my, turning too many pages here. To item number seven, which is lubrication and hazardous material, there is no A there. And I would be, it seemed to me like it would, you know, to keep further confusion if we took the A off of 11 and leave it like item number seven, where there is no way. Or more importantly, to take Mark's analogy about, well, we're just doing it like all the rest of them, we ought to put an A on seven also. But my preference would be to take the A off of 11. It's just ice throw, and then the paragraph that goes along with it. I think that would, that, that implies there is a B. It's just ice throw, and then the paragraph that goes along with it. I think that would, that, that implies there is a B somewhere.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree, because then you'd sort of assume that, that maybe there's something got left out.
Yes.
B is not there.
That's my whole point. Here's, too many people would assume, where's the B? And, and therefore, I'm not recommending you go back to seven and put an A on there, because the same confusion would be there someday. It might be ten years from now. Where's the B on seven? So, my recommendation is, even to the extent that I'd almost make a motion, if we need to make a motion, to take that A off of eleven under one oh seven. And even though I understand, Mark, why you put it in there.
I would just comment right quick, you know, regarding number seven, yeah, it was, it was not our intention to leave the A off there. It was just, we just missed it. It's another syntax, you know, on the, on the document, so we just missed that. If we would have caught it, we would have had an A there as well, but we could just easily take the A out. That's, that's no issue. I, I have no, no problem with that.
Well, I, I don't think it's worth a motion.
No.
I don't think so either.
I would make that if, if the, if the commissioners think that it needs to be voted upon, but I, my recommendation is to take the A off of eleven.
Right.
So, it reads just like seven, and doesn't imply somewhere, ten years from now, where's the B?
Yep.
So, I would move that, that with that change, that we approve the document as amended today for submission to the county commission, if that's whatever the appropriate language is for the motion.
I would second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Staff, call the roll.
Seltzer?
I would just like to comment that the effort the committee commissioners had made on developing these regulations. However, I feel that there are a couple areas that, you know, I would like to see more thought into, such as the setbacks on non-participating properties, and building in some actual teeth into some regulations on mitigation, which, you know, we've discussed in the past. For those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Macklin?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Johns?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Gertson?
Yes.
Our copy of this document will go to the county commissioners, so what, after the first year?
It'll be after the first year. Date is to be determined right now. We're not sure when we'll get this document on. I would also point to the board that, you know, this document could very well be referred back to you for further discussion or clarification from the board of county commissioners. And so, you know, I'll be informing you of that as we go along with this, but yeah, sometime in January, this will go before then.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a comment I'd like to have entered into the record, and that is that we have a duly elected new county commissioner taking office sometime in January. I'm not sure the exact date, but I, my, what I'd like to have entered into the record is the county commission, don't discuss this until that new commissioner is on duty, and the reason for that is that new duly elected county commissioner has attended some of the public hearings, and the other substitute county commissioner has not attended any of the public hearings, and the public is a very important part of this, so I think it should not come before the county commission for discussion until the duly elected commissioners are seated.
Harley, I will echo your sentiments on that.
Thank you. And all I care about is that be part of our record, that I said that, and that whoever agreed with me have that. You can put your name on that, too.
We'll, yeah, we will make that part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with that too, Harley. Thank you.
You know, we, we should commend Daniel Friesen for, as soon as he knew he was ultimately going to be the president, or the commissioner, he started attending meetings, particularly the public meetings, and that's really important. The public is a very important part of this whole process.
I think the date is January eleven.
Correct. Bruce? It's that week sometime, yeah.
Okay.
Real quick, real quick comment I have. I want to thank this board for all their diligence in their review. It's been a long process. I want to also thank staff for their, their diligence in doing their research and, and spending the time in, in, in creating the document. It's, it's, this has been, it, I think I said early on in the process, it's, it's hard to do things simple, and we've, we've created a document, I think, that has some substance, and we, I, I look forward to seeing what, seeing the, seeing it being presented to the county commission. I will move on to new business. "To protect the rights of all parties involved and to give an opportunity for everyone to speak, the Reno County Planning Commission follows a specific procedure outlined in the handouts on your chairs. If you, if you were at, here again, if you were there, you would have these handouts. During the hearing, there will be an opportunity for comments from the applicant, planning and zoning staff, and members of the audience. Members of the planning commission may ask questions or request additional information at any time. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners within approximately a couple weeks." Now, a couple weeks puts us right at the first year, so I would assume it's going to be a January meeting that, that this takes place. Mark will notify the applicant of the date. Anyone else who is interested can contact Mark or the county commission for the exact date. Regardless of whether or not the planning commission approves or disapproves of the proposed conditional use permit, it is possible to file a protest regarding the decision. Please contact Mark for the process that must be used to file this protest. I'll now formally open the hearing regarding case number two zero two zero dash fourteen, a request by Adam and Maria Post and Lee Olson to vacate a thirty foot, thirty foot wide street as easement located on lots five and ten, block one of Rolling Hills subdivision. The addresses to the properties are two three two five East Fifty-Sixth Avenue and one nine zero zero East Fifty-Fourth Avenue. Do any of the planning committee, planning commission members have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Do any planning commissioners have any outside contact with the applicant?
No.
No.
Will the applicant, applicant, please, please state your name and address for the record. You have ten minutes to present your case.
My name is Adam Post. I live at two three two five East Fifty-Sixth Avenue. I just found out about this future road easement when I put in for a building permit to build a thirty by forty shop in my backyard to store my vehicles and whatnot. And I'd like to have it vacated due to the fact that it dead ends on my property and just something that doesn't look like it's going to be of any use.
Okay. Board, do we have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, staff?
This road easement is located in Rolling Hills subdivision, and Rolling Hills is located, really at the corner of Fifty-Sixth Avenue and Halsted Street here, just north of the city of Hutchinson, and if you would refer to the copy of the plat map that I provided you, and also the, the aerial photo, I tried to give the board a visual of where this road easement would go, and as Mr. Post said, he applied for a zoning permit to construct a, a building here a few months back, and that's when I brought his attention, that there is approximately thirty feet of this thirty foot road easement on his property right now, and even though the likelihood of this being constructed is probably slim to none, he still cannot place that building in that easement legally here. So, he would have essentially a thirty foot setback from his rear property line instead of the normal ten foot setback, and so at that time, he, he decided he wasn't interested in doing that, and so we issued the permit with that thirty foot setback, and then Mr. Post approached me about a month or so later and decided that he would want to go ahead and proceed on with, with vacating this easement, and this easement is actually on his property and also another applicant that's in here, and his name is Mr. Lee Olson. He's got the majority of it, and if you look at that aerial photo that I provided the board, there was actually a, a building that was constructed before Mr. Olson purchased the property, but constructed like right on that easement, and I had, at the time, I recall, informed the owner of the property at that time that there was that easement in there, and he assured me that he was going to build that building outside of that easement, and which, according to the aerial, looks like he, he did, but still, you could theoretically have a road being constructed in here. My opinion on this is, this again is a poorly designed feature of this subdivision. You know, you do not plat roads in, in a subdivision that you had no intention of building, nor should you be plating half a road in here. Typically, most roads are going to be a minimum of, say, sixty foot wide from right of way to right of way. Here is only a thirty foot strip of ground, you know, if the township or if the developer of the subdivision want to build a road out there, they would have to essentially go and acquire like an additional, say, thirty foot or even maybe forty foot to make it a standard road. Another issue with this is the fact that there is no cul-de-sac, hammerhead turnaround, so even if this road was built, you would just pull your car straight up there, and then there's no way of being able to turn around or back out of there without backing on somebody's property, and so again, this is really a poor design within this subdivision, and we've taken care of some of these here in, in the past few, few months. It provides no, no value to the subdivision. There's no amenities that this road would lead to, meaning like a park or a pond, a nature area, you know, and it's just private property, and I guarantee you, if you drove out there, you wouldn't even see or know that there was an actually a road easement in there, and that's not the only road easement within this subdivision. You know, you can look and you see there's other road easements that are in this subdivision right now that probably shouldn't as well be vacated. It just hasn't posed an issue with the owners of, of those property, and so if it ever does, I'm sure we'll be back here at the same type of hearing, looking at vacating that as well. But again, as we discussed last month here with some of our vacations, you're actually working under chapter fifty-eight of the state statutes, where you have to find three, three items in favor of the applicant. You have to really determine that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. My, my staff report here discusses those. I can tell you that this was notified in the paper in accordance with state statute, and so with that, staff recommends approval based off of those three findings there, and so I will stand for any questions that the board may have with that.
Out of curiosity, Mark, what's the date that that originally plat was?
Did I put it in my staff report? I thought it was in the sixties again. The only one I know I put in the staff report.
I believe that it was written nineteen sixty-nine on the report.
There you go. Yeah, I knew it headed somewhere, nineteen sixty-nine, so it's fifty years old. Sixty, sixty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, so over fifty years old right there, so.
Sounds like we have an opportunity to clean up something.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned up. I mean, there's, like I said, there's other, other easements out there that aren't being utilized. I'm sure, I'm sure the property owners probably do not have any idea that there is that easement that is out there right now.
I would ask my famous question of Mr. Britton, if he's available. Would like to go on record as maintaining that there is no intent foreseeable future for any need for this, for road easement or utilities, or of any other, any other possible use for this easement under consideration before we give it away, and I'm in favor of giving it away and cleaning it up, but there's no possibility of ever coming back to wishing we had it for utilities or, or something else?
No, this has nothing to do with the county road.
Thank you.
There are no utilities in that, in that easement as well.
Any other questions for the staff or the applicant? Staff, is there anyone from the public to comment on this case?
There's nobody here from the public, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything more from the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any, any discussion for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that case number twenty twenty dash one four, request by Adam and Maria Post and Lee Olson, requesting the thirty foot street easement located along the west property line of lots five and ten, block one of Rolling Hills subdivision, be vacated as described in this petition. Finding that proper notice has been given, the public will suffer no loss of inconvenience from the vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered, based on the reasons as listed in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Staff, call the roll.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Johns?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Gertson?
Yes.
Again, with the holidays and stuff coming out, but you know, it'll be at least probably a couple of weeks before this can get on to the county commissioners' agenda, but I will be in touch with Mr. Post on, on that date and keep him notified.
I wish to call Mr. Post for going through the motions and the process here and bringing this to our attention and allowing us to clean this up, so I appreciate his input on this.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone's time. I appreciate it.
Other new business before this board. In your packet, you also received a resolution setting the place and dates and time and location for the twenty twenty-one planning commission meetings. Any, does anyone see it, as you had reviewed it, does anyone see any conflicts with those dates?
I might add that it's the same time, four thirty PM on the, the third Thursday. We do have a case for January. It's a board of zoning appeal case. I have not published that yet, so if there's a desire of the board to, to change the date or change the time, then you certainly can at this time. If you're happy with the date and time, then, you know, you could look at approving it as submitted.
If we, if we change that, we'd mess up my wife's calendar on the kitchen cabinet here, so I'm all in favor of, of sticking with the third Thursday at four thirty every month.
Hey, any other, any other discussion?
I'm moving through the resolution adopting the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-one.
Been moved and seconded. Staff, is this a voice vote or is this a roll call?
I think you can just do a voice vote if you'd like.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Resolution passed. Uh, item C, our annual review of the zoning and subdivision regulations. If there are any corrections or additions, does anybody have, uh, any direction for staff on our zoning and subdivision regulations?
Little bit of background, uh, board members, as you may recall, um, these are statutory requirements that we are supposed to review these documents every year for any potential changes, uh, that we have. I know every year we talk about certain things here. Uh, this is opportunity really for the board to give me ideas, if you have any at this time. Then what we would probably do is put, uh, those items on for action, uh, informal, uh, request for a modification, if you have anything like that. And so we would, uh, just looking for ideas right now that I could write, write down, and then I can get with Russ and we can determine a time to put it on, on the agenda for any kind of, of formal action. If you have anything, that's great. And if you, if you don't have anything, that's, uh, that's fine too. I know for probably the last four years, we've been talking about the sheds and I keep promising that hopefully I'll be able to get to that one of these years. And, uh, we'll see, we'll see how the year goes next year to be able to bring that forward for additional discussion. But certainly there are other things, you know, that we can, uh, look at modifying if you feel like there's a concern or something's poorly written. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Russ, my, my only thought is looking at the size of the square footage for accessory structures. We have so many forty by sixty buildings that they're automatically have to come to us for, for review. And it just seems like it would make sense for us to adjust that at some point. And I know, I know Mark's got, had plenty on his plate the last couple of years, so.
Yeah. I, I was thinking of that tonight as we were, as we were approving that forty by forty structure. Thinking, you know, I, I know there's, there's, uh, sometimes when you make a decision, there's unintended consequences. So we, we sure what, uh, I, I think staff, I think it'd be a good move to review that square footage. What, what would, what seem, what would seem to be right? I'm with you. I'm with you, Lisa. It, uh, it, is that two thousand square feet of accessory structure the right number? Should it be twenty-four hundred? Should it be twenty-six hundred? I don't know what that right number is. I'm just throwing numbers out for conversation here.
I, I hear a, a, an ad on the local radio often that says, um, they're talking about how they can build your shed for you and a forty by sixty is a perfect size, so.
Yes. I, I, I hear you. I hear you. So.
I'd like to see this, I'd like to see staff, uh, at the next meeting, give us a brief review about how, at what time did this number get created? And that would might cement in my mind, it's time to enlarge the number if I knew the past history.
I can tell you that.
I say Lisa could probably tell you, or I can tell you right now if you have a brief discussion.
Yeah, it wasn't very long ago, but it was when we were working on the subdivisions and we just picked a number. I don't know that anybody had a really good idea. Russ, were you on there at that point?
No, I was not.
It was just look around the table and say, well, what's the right size? And somebody said, well, two thousand square feet, and we went with it. I mean, it's kind of like setting a setback. It's kind of hard to know. But then it, immediately after that, we started getting these forty by sixty sheds. And so then we had to review every one of them and, and we, I don't think we've turned down any of them.
Our regulations are, are developed off of, uh, Gary County, I think. And, and the person that, that wrote them was a planner there at Gary County. And I can recall that the, uh, the original proposal was twelve hundred square feet. Cause that's what Gary County has. They have it twelve hundred. And I think this board just, uh, we had a lot of discussion at that point. And literally, I think we just threw the number out, well, twelve hundred is not, uh, good enough. Let's just make it two thousand. And so that's what it was really hardly. I think it was just a simple, uh, number that was just thrown out there by the board. And so, well, we don't think twelve hundred is really appropriate. That's only a thirty by forty. Uh, let's just make it two thousand. And, you know, a lot of it's not necessarily the size of the shed, but when you add in that extra component of the combination of all accessory structures, now you're starting to get really tight, you know, with that. And we approved it in like Russ, that I think we just had unintended consequences with that. So, um, we can have further discussion, you know, in the coming months on, on this. And, you know, I have some different ideas and I think this board can be involved in that certainly and, and tell me maybe what direction to go and how we should look at doing that.
Looks like we have two issues. One is the size of a single building and another one is the number of square footage on one plot of land. And that needs to be evaluated and, uh, and either agree that what we have is where we want to stay or that we need to increase it to a different number.
Well, and, and the reason, you know, we, we have that combination is, is the fact that, you know, you take like tonight's case, for example, that's a very large building and if we said, uh, no, you can't build that, you know, well, he could theoretically build, you know, three fifteen hundred square foot buildings and get the same square footage of all the buildings while just getting a permit. So when you add the word combination there, then you still have to go through that process. And so that's why that was added to prevent, uh, people from going around the regulations like that. So, but I've got some other ideas, you know, on that and we'll, we'll present those at a coming meeting maybe and see what direction the board thinks they want to go. I know we've had discussions in the past, but we haven't really had, uh, much going forward with that. So I'd like to be able to try and make that one of my goals for next year.
Yep, I, I, I think as much. I, you're, you're, you're into all the, uh, all the zoning regs deep. You'll, you'll, uh, I'm sure you could do the research. You'll be able to do the research and, and come to us with a, with a proposal on what that, what, what it would look like in your mind. And then we can, we can have, have that as point of discussion.
I would agree. We seem to be, uh, was approving these, uh, these items. Also seems to me that we, we seem to, the applicants always seem to come from a situation where they have, uh, adequate acreage to, to spot them. Uh, and I'm wondering what happens if we get down to a, uh, an applicant that only has four or five acres. A hundred by a hundred foot building is suddenly, suddenly takes up a lot of room there, uh, uh, in combination with the, with the sewer wastewater, uh, laterals and, and, uh, areas there. So I, I think it does bear watching now, the two thousand square feet might not be the right figure. Again, I agree with, uh, what's said, but I can see a situation with smaller acreage where it might come to, might, might be a, uh, a.
I, I agree. That's a good point. Yeah.
And that's the issue you gotta be careful of as well.
Anything else in the zoning and subdivision rigs that we'd like to see Mark, uh, focus on in the coming year? Silence speaks volumes, Mark. Looks like you got a challenge ahead of you on the, on the, uh, on the buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I do. And I said, we gotta be careful that we don't have other unintended consequences, you know, the other way. And so, um, we'll get together and we'll, we'll look at that. And, you know, amending this type of regulation will affect, again, several sections, you know, of the, of the regulations as well, so.
Fair enough. Uh, last item, a new business is review of the comp plan, the comprehensive plan for any corrections or additions.
Yeah, again, this is about a four-year-old document right here. Uh, we would hope that there wouldn't be major, major changes, you know, with that. But, uh, Russ and I have talked, you know, in the past that we'd like to, you know, be able to get together as a group and look at some of the goals and, uh, action items in, in that plan and be able to do something, you know, with that set, just having it, uh, sit here as, as a document. Again, four years old, I would hope that there wouldn't be major changes, but, you know, we don't know, um, if there are. You know, I think where the changes would come into play would be, you know, toward the back of the document where we talk about goals, and action items that we would want to have the county commission and even yourselves, you know, achieve. And we'll be looking at hopefully, you know, those in, in the future, you know, as, as time allows.
I, I, I would love to have, uh, a roundtable discussion with the county commissioners about the goals. I know we, we've, uh, when we, uh, when we built the new comp plan document, it, it volleyed a couple of times. And it would just, and I, I don't, I'm with you. I don't think we have a, we have a wholesale change with the document. I think we've got some, we, we'd like, I'd like to review, have a conversation with the, with, a face-to-face conversation with the, with this board and the, and the camp board of county commissioners to, uh, discuss the goals moving forward, to see if they are relevant to the, to the board, to the sitting board, and whether they are what the vision of that, whether it reflects the, the board's vision for Reno County.
Well said, exactly.
I agree.
We're at the end of new business. Staff, do you have any other business for this board?
I have two, uh, comments for, for the board. If you'd allow me here right quick, just a couple of brief statements. Uh, for the rest of the board, um, I'd like to announce that, you know, Russ Gerson was reappointed by the county commissioners to, uh, a second three-year term on the board this week, so he will be starting his.
Yeah, Lisa's happy. She doesn't have to be chairman again.
Applause for that, uh, everything with that. So that went well and everything. So we thank Russ for reapplying here and does a good job as chairman. Second thing I'd probably announce to the board that, uh, we hope to have a new planning commission, uh, member, uh, appointed here sometime in January and, and sitting, uh, before our meeting in January. So, um, don't know who that's going to be yet, but, uh, but, you know, I, I've heard that, yeah, that they're going to be probably doing that in the next few weeks here.
Is that the lar, at-large one?
Um, there's not really an at, at-large one. I mean, you know, yeah, seven members, you, you can look at it. There should be, you know, you'd like to have, say, two, two representatives from each district, but there's nothing really in our bylaws that says it has to be two from, from each district. The only thing that we really have in our bylaws right now is that we can have no more than three people from a city, on the board right now. We have to keep the majority of the, of the board, uh, out in the county because we are the county planning commission. And so right now, we're looking for people that are outside the county because right now, you know, Bruce lives in the city, Harley lives in the city, and then Ken recently moved to the city of Turon. So that's our three, uh, maximum right there that we're at.
Got you.
Yeah. But yeah, it doesn't have to be from each commissioner district. It'd be ideal, maybe if it was, then you have one at-large selected by the whole. But, uh, that usually isn't the way that it works out.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
That's all you have?
Unless somebody else has anything.
I do want to mention one thing.
Go ahead.
These, uh, these meetings here, they'll be held this way until, uh, further notice. Uh, I'll make that decision monthly by monthly, but, uh, I want the, the commission member here to feel comfortable coming here. And also I need to be comfortable allowing the public in here. So January and probably, and February will be held this way. And then after that, we'll look at it monthly by monthly. Is that okay with everybody?
I appreciate the change.
Yeah, that, that was fine with me. Uh, it went well. It's better for me. Am I, am I available on video or just only audio? Can you see my smiling face? I'm not sure.
Only, only audio can.
Well, I've been playing with the camera here and I've shut something off that should, should be on. All right, I, I can see all you fine people and you're even better looking than I remembered.
The camera does us justice, is what you're saying.
You've got a problem, Russ. You're sitting under a light and there's a kind of a.
Kind of a halo, don't I? I'm gonna, I'm gonna change that for the next time. I just happen to be, uh, I mean, I, I happen to be in the office in Heston today with work. So I've, in order, rather than speeding home and, and letting you look at my basement, I, I joined from work.
I, I'm glad I wasn't on camera then, uh, you didn't see me picking my nose or any, anything, uh, obnoxious like that. I'll try to do better next time, but, but I'm happy, I'm happy with this situation.
Yep, it is. We've, we've broke ground on a new, on a new way of doing business.
I might, I might confess that, uh, I went through the documents that Mark sent me. I went through with a yellow highlighter and highlighted a whole bunch of stuff in there, but I didn't highlight that item that said by Zoom. So I confess, I went to the meeting out at the, in South Jefferson and then came back home and, and started all over. And thank you, Mark, for not telling these people that I don't, I read all of that stuff except I didn't, didn't read it thoroughly.
I wasn't going to tell anybody. I was letting you.
I was going to make sure, just in case you wanted to, you can't now.
Well, you, you made great time, Harley. Uh, well, I want to, uh, I want to win, I guess, final thoughts. Uh, I want to wish this board a, a happy, happy holidays. Uh, this Christmas season is definitely different. The whole year has been different than what we all anticipated. But this Christmas season is definitely, uh, a, a first for my, for me as, 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 just, just as a whole, uh, for my, my, uh, our families are, are, uh, are taking Christmas in shifts this year, which is weird, not all being around the same table. But nonetheless, I want to wish you all a, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and, uh, a safe and healthy holidays.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
You. I'll entertain.
You've done a good job, Russ.
Well, thank you.
Not quite as good as Lisa, but you've done a great job.
Nice save, Harley. Yeah, we, we.
He's doing great.
Uh, man, well, I'll tell you, I will, uh, with those final words, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'm not all, you now, am I?
Don't see you, Ken.
Still don't see you.
No, I'm still, I'm still playing.